You ready?
Yes.
All right, we are broadcasting.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, May the 12th, Council, City Council meeting, and we'll now call this meeting to order. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have an invitation. So, Councilman Vice Chair Smith, would you put us a flag up, please?
Working on it, sir. One moment.
Okay, would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. You'll put our screen back up. I'm gonna read tonight from Matthew, Chapter 6, which will also serve as our prayer. Matthew 6, verse 9. "After this manner, therefore pray, Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever." Amen.
Amen.
At this time, we have no special presentations. I will ask for removal of minutes. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes and a proper second. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Okay, minutes are approved, and now we'll move into our order of business for the City Council. Councilman Smith, you have your hand up, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to address an item from last week, and according to our city attorney, this is the most appropriate time to do that at first business. So, with that, last week, we confirmed the appointment of our city treasurer. And immediately following that appointment, even later that night, we learned of additional information about this individual that I feel should have been disclosed prior to her appointment. It's not the information, it's the lack of disclosure. So, because this information was not disclosed for us to be part of our decision, I would like to move to rescind that appointment confirmation, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion, it's in the form of a motion, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the floor to rescind our vote of last week. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up.
Thank you, Councilman Ledford.
Yes, Mr. Chair, before I second this, I'd like to, I'd like to second this to open up this conversation, because I do feel like that was important information we needed to know in advance of our vote.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to rescind, and a proper second. Do we have any questions or discussions before we take a roll call vote? I see no hands. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
No.
All right, that's seven yeses.
Okay, and I think, Mr. Attorney, doesn't this require a two-thirds vote to rescind?
The two-thirds vote has been met at this point, yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion to rescind that vote is approved, or it does pass to seven to one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At this time, I have an item that I would also like this council to reconsider. We had an item that we took no action on last week. Madam Clerk, if you would read that item for me, please, it was 7C on last week's agenda concerning the real estate services with CBRE. Would you read that, please?
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to enter into an independent contract to services standard form agreement and substantially the form attached with CBRE Inc. for specified real estate services for a term of one year, with the option to renew for two additional terms of one year each.
So, I would like to ask the council to reconsider taking action on this item by entertaining the motion to place it on the agenda for May the 19th. Councilman Smith, I see your hand.
Yes, sir, I was just gonna move that we place this item back on our agenda for next week, please.
Okay. We, we have a motion and a second to place this item on the May 19th agenda. Councilman Oglesby and Councilwoman Burris, I see your hand. Is it, you have a question, or are you just gonna second?
I was gonna second.
I have a question.
Okay.
We never got as far, because there wasn't any discussion last week. Who, I'm not sure who on staff might answer these, this question. Is that economic and community development?
It wasn't economic, community.
Okay, then Ms. Williams, or?
I think Mr. Bealan.
That'd be great.
I think Mr. Bealan, or perhaps even if one of you, or Tony Sammons, if you'd raise your hand, let me know which one would like to field these questions. If not... Okay, who's got their, who's got your hand up?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, okay, there we go. Ms. Williams?
Yes, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Burris, yeah, I'd be happy to ask you any question.
Sure, sure. This was just some clarification that I never got to ask last week. So, why, why do we need this person? Why do we need this service?
What, what we typically do, well, let me say what, ECD is responsible for the acquisition and disposition of all city property. And we work on behalf of our clients, or really the other departments. What happens often is when we, as the city, start pursuing a piece of property. One of two things generally happens. Number one, somebody says, the seller says, oh, it's the city. So, let me see how much I can get from the city, because they have plenty of money. That's one road. Number two, folks will say, well, let me not negotiate in earnest, because I don't want to work with the city, because their process is so drawn out, it's very, it's different from a traditional real estate transaction. So, that happens when we are working on behalf of Public Works, when we're working on behalf of, of the fire department, when we're working on behalf of YFD, et cetera. So, it was determined that, in order for us to avoid that, if we had an agent, a broker, this is a firm, not a person, a broker to represent us when we feel it's needed, and it's increasingly needed with the, with the real estate market, then that person could work on our behalf with it being anonymous.
So, it, so, and I get that, I get that. So, it is that you're thinking that somehow people aren't gonna know that this is our agent? Because it's a record, actually, that we're approving them.
Sure, it's a national firm, so this firm does transactions all over the country and all over the city. So, we wouldn't, we're not their only customer. And, and it may be that people certainly find out anonymity is not the only reason for us to do it. But when you have skilled Realtor, real estate brokers doing that work, you're gonna presumably get a better outcome. And, and so that is the reason that we put it forward. And I also want to mention that it went through a full process of RFP. So, if there were other brokers in the process, other brokers in or outside of Chattanooga who were interested in it, and Ms. Haley in purchasing can answer more of those details. But it was a professional services process that we adhere to as far as the requirements for acquisition.
Sure, no, and then I just have one more question.
Sure.
Have you all determined that if we do this through a broker, and I understand your reasons, that what would be the loss? What's the commission?
The commission is zero, as far as the city's concerned. The city pays nothing.
So, if we sell something for $100,000, we will get less than that, right? Because they get a commission?
If we were to engage them to represent us on the sale of a property, this was necessitated for the purchase of a property. Because the fire department, you, you guys may recall, South is gonna kill me, I can't remember the fire hall name, but the fire station on South Willow. We, we negotiated that with the owner. We were very fortunate to have partners with the McClellan Foundation. It was a very complicated land swap, donation, purchase, the whole nine. It, the, for transactions like that, and simpler transactions, we just feel like it's better to have a professional who does that every day to be doing that.
So, the commission, they work for the seller, technically, right? Does work for the purchase?
The way that real estate typically works is the seller pays the commission for the, both sides, the, the listing agent and the purchasing agent, yes, ma'am. So, if, if we have an agent that is representing us on the purchase of a property, the city has no expense associated with that.
Okay.
For the, for the commission, that there's no, you know, none of that. We would have our own expenses if we were to do environmental testing, et cetera, et cetera. But as far as the involvement of a professional real estate broker for the, to represent us on the purchase of a property, there's no, there's no commission.
Is there any expense, is there any expense on us?
Not associated with having a broker, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Thank you, Chair. So, we did see that there wasn't any expense attached to it. So, I think that was kind of self-explanatory. However, we was told last week that there wasn't a need, and I think that's where the issue is. And then it was stated that you and Mr. Bealan both said that it was a need. But going back to re, listen to the recording, no one, what was said was that there wasn't a need. So, is there a need for this, so we can move forward with it, or not?
There is a, an immediate need for a broker to negotiate for land for the fire department. Even without that immediate need, there is a need for us to have a broker to represent us on similar transactions. And so, to, to answer your question, yes, there is an immediate need. The fire department is waiting for that process to start.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we move on? I think we're ready for a roll call vote, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk. And this is, the roll call vote is to place this item on the May 19th agenda. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
That's what, muted.
Yes.
Sign it.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Okay, motion is approved, and this item will go on next week's agenda. Mr. Attorney, can you make sure that happens?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have no ordinances on final reading this week, but we do have first reading. 6A, under planning, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance. So, as a rezoned property located at 7301 Shallowford Row, from R1 Residence Zone to C4 Plan Commerce Center Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to defer this item until June 9th, and ask the clerk to please make this available on our June 2nd Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, please.
Okay, do I have a second? Councilman Byrd has seconded the motion for a deferral till June the 9th. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Okay, motion's approved to defer until June the 9th. And Madam Clerk, and the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair is the one that made the motion, so I'm sure he can make sure that happens in Planning and Zoning Committee.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, B, please.
An ordinance deannexing a certain parcel adjacent to the current city limits, which is located at 2815 Military Row, within the city of Chattanooga in Hamilton County, Tennessee.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. The applicant for this request has submitted a, an email today to myself and the city attorney withdrawing their request to deannex. So, with that being said, I move that this item is withdrawn.
Be withdrawn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion and a second. Any questions about withdrawing this request? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion to withdraw is approved. Now, we'll move into resol, I'm sorry, we still have one more ordinance, 6C, please.
An ordinance to amend the Charter of the City of Chattanooga and all acts, ordinances, and other charter provisions, ammendatory thereof, pursuant to the provisions of Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment, so as to change the city charter by adding a new section 1317 related to the establishment of a police advisor and review committee to Title 13 of the city charter.
Councilman Gilbert, then Councilwoman Conroy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries 8-0. Now, we'll move into Resolutions, 7A, Madam Clerk.
A resolution approving short-term vacation rental application number 19STBR00184 for property located at 1420 Madison Street.
Councilman Byrd, do we need Mr. Fisher to come on board?
No, sir, we don't. I've talked to the community of Madison, and I talked to Mr. Bryson and the community, and Mr. Bryson were able to get together and have a community vote. And the community related to me that they would like for me to move forward with this, and I move to approve.
Okay, well, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries 8-0. The next four items, Madam Clerk, B, C, D, and E, would you read those all at one time? And we're gonna vote on those as a package, please.
Yes. Item B, a resolution authorizing the city finance officer to submit a request for change in plan operations, RCPO for Mass Mutual 457B, deferred compensation plan as provided in the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Development Security Act, CARES Act, to allow the following optional provisions affecting March 27, 2020. Item C, a resolution authorizing city finance officer to elect optional ICMARC 457B deferred compensation plan provisions to provide coronavirus-related relief as allowed by the CARES Act. Item D, a resolution authorizing the city finance officer to elect Nationwide Retirement Solutions 457B deferred compensation plan provisions related to coronavirus-related distributions included in the CARES Act. Item E, a resolution authorizing the city finance officer to elect optional provisions that allow coronavirus-related distributions from Voy Financial 457B deferred compensation plan as allowed by the CARES Act.
Okay, we have Councilwoman Burris, followed by Councilman Gilbert.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions on these items? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's 8-0.
Motion carries 8-0. Madam Clerk, 7C, please. I'm sorry, we did, 7F.
A resolution authorizing the Chattanooga Fire Department to apply for and, if awarded, accept a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant supplemental AFGS opportunity, which is a special opportunity for fire departments to quite quickly recover costs directly associated with expenses related to COVID-19, with the city's 10% match in the amount of $8,000 for a total amount of $80,000.
Councilman Smith, I see your hand, and then Councilman Gilbert has his hand up.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions on this item? I know it was added late, but I think it's a worthy cause. Any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight, eight yeses.
Okay, motion carries 8-0. 7G, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number W20004201 to Navco Electric Company Inc., Chattanooga, Tennessee, Storm Station 1 Replacement of Motor Control Center, MCC, for a contract amount of $536,410, plus a contingency amount of $53,650, for an amount not to exceed $590,060.
Okay. Let's see, Councilman Gilbert, and then Councilwoman Burris.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yeah.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries 8-0. Council, if there is no objection, I'd like to read H, I, and J together, and vote on those as a package. No one has any objections. Madam Clerk, H, I, and J, please.
Yes. H, a resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Chattanooga Christian School for the award of the city's green grants program for a total project cost of $110,000. Item I, a resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one finer for Complete Demolition Services LLC of Carrollton, Georgia, relative to contract number Y15008202 Avondale Youth and Family Development Center building abatement and demolition for an increased amount of $52,045 to release the remaining contingency amount of $9,947.55 for a revised contract amount of $103,300. Item J, a resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into year four of a possible five-year agreement with Material Matters Inc. for professional services related to the BioSolids Data Management System and all services listed therein for an amount not to exceed $67,750.
Councilman Oglesby, I'll see your hand.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve H, I, and J with a proper second. Any questions on the floor? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries 8-0. Madam Clerk, 7K, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the state of Tennessee, Hamilton County, and Tennessee Interstate Conservancy to maintain landscaping improvements to the downtown interchanges of the roadway known as Highway 127 between the intersection of Interstate 24 and Ojatty Bridge as a pilot for the beautification of the interstate highway system by the state of Tennessee with the city's annual contribution amount not to exceed $62,500 for each fiscal year.
Councilman Oglesby?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions? Councilwoman Burris, I'll see.
I was gonna second.
Okay, okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's 8-0.
Motion carries 8-0. Now, we'll move into transportation, under Resolutions 7L, please.
A resolution authorizing the Chattanooga Department of Transportation to erect commemorative secondary street name signs on North Orchard Knob Avenue from Citico Avenue to Milney Street, designating said portions of North Orchard Knob Avenue as HH Wright Memorial Parkway.
Councilman Byrd, then Councilwoman Conroy.
It's with honor, I move to approve.
Second, but I actually had my hand up before that.
Is this, in something before?
Yeah, I wanted to know if Councilwoman Burris needed to recuse herself from the votes, and she was on the board. Okay, but we got past it, so I guess, yeah, she didn't have to, okay.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second. Do we have any questions concerning this item? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Ledford?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion to approve carries 8-0. Now, we'll go into purchases. Mr. Vice Chair, can you bring Mr. Sammons on, please?
Yes, sir. There he is.
All right, Mr. Sammons? Are you with us? Good evening.
I am.
Good.
Good evening, members of council. We have five new purchases for your approval, and two emergency purchases to bring to your attention. Starting with the first four being from the Waste Resource Division of Public Works. First item is an overhead door annual maintenance and repair service being awarded to Certified Door and Dock Services LLC for an annual cost estimate of $61,000. Next, we have land application of BioSolids being awarded to Denali Water Solutions LLC for an annual cost estimate of $2,300,000. Next, we have Kohler Generator Model 25CCL being awarded to Nixon Power Services for an annual cost estimate of $34,982.88. Next, we have Bulk Quick Lime being awarded to Mississippi Lime Company for annual cost estimate of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and sixteen cent. The last new purchase is from the Traffic Operations Division of C dot for glass beads for traffic paint being awarded to Swarco Industries LLC for an annual cost estimate of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Berg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Yes.
Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Leford?
Yes.
Councilman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Simmons?
Yes, thank you. And we have two emergency purchases, uh, that were under the mayor's emergency declaration, and those purchases were emergency supplies, uh, two cases of ninety-nine percent alcohol to clean electronics, uh, as well as fifty plastic trigger thirty-two ounce spray bottles for disinfectant and, uh, also P P supplies, the cotton breathable safety mask. And that concludes all the purchases for this week.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions about the emergency purchases? I see no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let me switch my screens. Uh, now we come to other business. Uh, any council member have some other business that they need to bring before the council? Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to announce some COVID-nineteen testing that's going to be in District seven in our community. Uh, the first one will be tomorrow, May thirteenth, uh, at the Bethlehem Center, uh, ten till two. And then I just received a notice today that there'll be, uh, some COVID-nineteen testing at this coming Friday, uh, at Boynton Terrace, and it's going to serve the senior citizens of Boynton Gateway and Dogwood Towers. And it's going to be from ten to two also. And, um, and this coming Monday at Mary Walker Towers, uh, May the eighteenth, uh, it's going to be, uh, some COVID-nineteen testing. Uh, on the fifteenth, the testing will be done by the U T C School of Nursing, C H I Memorial, and the Hamilton County Health Department, and all are free for seniors in that area. And on May the eighteenth at Mary Walker Towers, the testing will be done by the U T C School of Nursing. Asking everybody to, uh, come out and take advantage of this very important testing, uh, especially, uh, seniors. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Councilman.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Conroy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to bring to light, I'm sure that you all have heard about the young black guy out of Brunswick, Georgia, who was, uh, killed jogging by a former police officer and his son, Ahmaud Arbery. And of course, we, this, hey, it's twenty-twenty, and we still, black people are getting killed for jogging, wearing a hoodie, carrying skittles, selling tapes, uh, you know, not having our identification on us or anything. Um, and I just, I'm hopeful, still with our police department, that we can get past those historical things that have, that continue to bring us to this place. Um, it's hard to deal with, you know, even though we say, let's unite, let's put it behind us, but every time that it sparks up, it puts the black community in a rage. We're already distrusting of our police officers. Um, it's even to the point of that they were distrusting of the military, of our national goal to come and administer testing, right? So it's, it's, it's just a lot of stuff to go behind it, but I wanted to just shed a little light. No, it doesn't have any, it didn't happen in Chattanooga. Uh, but it happened to a black individual for jogging. Could it possibly happen here? It could. Uh, but just wanted to make sure to say his name, Ahmaud Arbery. And hopefully, we can get to a place that this type of behavior will not continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Berg?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I would like to first thank everyone, uh, for just working to try to get people tested in our community. Uh, it's, it's hard, and there's not enough tests to go around to everyone, but so many people are working hard to make this happen when it comes to COVID-nineteen. So I just want to thank all my council members for making the phone calls. I know this is, uh, through the Health Department and through other entities. Uh, you all are reaching out to your friends and to, uh, just connections and people you know to make this happen for different communities. So I just want to first thank you all for that. And, uh, this, uh, Wednesday, May the twentieth, from ten a.m. to three p.m., uh, we will have, uh, COVID-nineteen free testing at Avondale Y F D Center. We will be in the parking lot. Uh, you can drive through and walk up, and we're just encouraging everyone to come out Wednesday, May the twentieth, from ten a.m. to three p.m. And I just want to thank Semple and all the partners that are working with these, uh, with the city to get this done and with the Health Department. It's just great to see people working together. And if anyone needs transportation, if you're looking for transportation, I've seen years of people that don't have rides, you can call Tri-City Transportation at four-two-three-five-four-four-one-zero-zero-eight. And that's Tri-City Transportation. And, uh, I just look forward to seeing everyone out there, May the twentieth, ten a.m. to three p.m. at Avondale Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Berg. Anybody else with other business? If not, we'll go to committee reports, and I'm going to start with Councilwoman Burris, because I think she's got something to share with us.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Beginning next week, we start our budget process. Um, I'm assuming next week we'll be on Zoom as well, Mr. Chair.
That's correct.
Do you have any idea how long that will be going? Or are we taking it from week to week?
At this point, week to week, but I would say into June at least.
All right. Then next week, we're gonna, we're gonna follow the exact same process we've always followed, and that is council will get a presentation by the city of the budget, uh, followed by the release of the budget online and via notebooks and P D Fs to us. Uh, your notebooks will be at the council building for you to pick up since we can't hand them to you because we're not having a meeting. And then we will be taking our discussion from there, Mr. Chair. Uh, the process will look a little different. However, I think it's going to be equally good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gilbert?
Report.
Councilwoman Conroy?
Uh, yes, just want to, uh, remind our constituents that although our Y F D centers are closed, we're still, uh, while the Y is providing sack lunches from three until five at our Y F D centers, Carver Center, Cromwell, East Chattanooga, John A. Patton, Washington Hills, and West Side. So from three to five, you can go there and you could pick up a sack lunch as partnership with the Y.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Berg?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, being the, uh, chairperson for, uh, public safety, I just want to let people know in our community that it's a new trend that is following, uh, social media and now has hit in our community where a lot of our young people are having paintball fights in our communities and in the streets, and, uh, they're having fun. And I, I, I think, uh, it's cool to see these guys not shooting at each other, to see rival game members or people who are at it at one time using paintballs and, uh, smoke bombs from paintballs to, to enjoy themselves and not, uh, shoot real bullets and, and hurt each other. But I just want people to be mindful and be careful because a lot of people are getting hit with these paintballs, and cars are getting hit, and just be careful who they're aiming these, uh, paintballs at, and that the community needs to know that our kids are out here doing this. So if you see a young kid, be careful and be mindful and, uh, know that, uh, the police are on top of it, and they're having, uh, meetings and, uh, working out a way to make this safe for everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Leford?
No report, Chairman.
Council, Vice Chair Smith?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Oglesby? You're, you're muted, sir. Unmute your mic.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, today, we had a great meeting, uh, where we got an, um, update and a review of the five-year C D B G plan and the, uh, funding that's associated with that. And next week, on May the nineteenth, we will have a short-term vacation rental, uh, review. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I added in, uh, an update on the skate park. It came up a couple of weeks ago. A couple of colleagues wanted to know where we are, and we will have a brief update with that.
Okay.
That's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh-huh.
Okay, um, now we come to the time where we recognize persons wishing to address the council. Vice Chair, do we have anybody that registered with us that wants to speak this evening?
We do, Mr. Chair. Ms. Marie Mott has registered to speak this evening.
Okay. If you want to bring Ms. Mott on?
Yes, sir.
And when you do, if you'll put the clock up, please.
Do you want to have, um, our city attorney go ahead and go through the rules, sir?
That'd be a good idea. Mr. Attorney, would you like to read the rules?
Yes, sir. Um, last week, after our last meeting, uh, the mayor or the governor, uh, Bill Lee, actually signed Executive Order thirty-four, which extends the requirements of the Open Meetings Act here uh, to be done by an electronic process. That is on our website. Uh, there is a notice that is provided to the public that anyone that wishes to speak during these meetings has to participate electronically, and Ms. Mott is elected to do that. Uh, for any public comments at the end of the meeting, the chair can recognize members of the public that wish to address the council. Anyone wishing to address, uh, has to provide their name, address, and council district to residents with, uh, some I D before the meeting. Uh, no person can have more than three minutes to speak. They can address the council upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority and not among matters that are under the authority of other governmental bodies or agencies. You can't use the, uh, opportunity to speak to use vulgar obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others and address the council as a whole and not make comments directed towards individual council members. So go right ahead, Ms. Mott. I believe you've heard that.